Good evening. This, the 11th meeting of the 72nd term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. I would ask everyone who have cell phones to please turn them off or put them on vibrate. Tonight's invocation will be led by Reverend Ramel McCall from Holy Trinity Baltimore. If everyone would please stand for the invocation and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in a moment of silence and prayer. O Holy One, be over our elected officials, be with their staff, be over their business tonight. Allow them to know that there are people praying for them and that they trust them with the decisions that are being made here at City Hall. I know their duties can be stressful and exhausting. Please alleviate all anxiety and stress that may be within them. Give them comfort and support in all that they do. Bless them and keep them and encourage them that they have the power and faith to make our city better every day. Allow an ongoing spirit of cooperation and peace be in the midst of all matters of City Council. Help them to see how all things can work together and how their service as council members of Baltimore City is needed and vital for the future of our great city. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for The clerk will call the roll of the members.
President Young, Cohen Scott, Dorsey Henry, Schleifer, Pinkett, Burnett, Ryssinger, Costello Stokes, Snead, Clark, Bullock. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you. This evening we welcome Nikita Haysberg, President of the Maryland Chapters of the Links.
President Young and all the guests and members of the City Council. I am Nikita Haysberg. I have the pleasure of being the President of the Baltimore Chapters of the Links. On the behalf, I bring you greetings. We are very pleased to be here and we want to thank Councilwoman Sharon Green Middleton for her gracious invitation. The Links Incorporated is a service organization of 14,000 primarily African-American women largely based in 41 states in the U.S., the Caribbean, and Africa. Founded in 1946 in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, The Links has grown to 284 chapters. The Links focus on service to our communities through various programs that range from health and human services to the arts and youth services both nationally and internationally. The Baltimore Maryland Chapter was chartered in 1948 and continues to play a vital role in the community through voter education, financial literacy, scholarships, and mentoring. We will be celebrating our 70th anniversary in 2018. Baltimore Links programs include supporting Blue Ford Drew Jemison STEM Academy, or BDJ, a Baltimore City Public School in West Baltimore. BDJ educates 600 African-American male scholars in grades 6 through 12. This school year, we started a NESBI, that is the National Society of Black Engineers Juniors Chapter at BDJ. We supported their first VEX robotics competition submission where they placed fourth in the qualifying round. We have taken the BDJ scholars to see movies such as Hidden Figures and I Am Not Your Negro. We registered eligible students to vote as well as hosted anti-bullying poster contests, HIV awareness, and Black Lives Matter forums at the school. The Baltimore Chapter provide over 150 wrapped hat and glove sets for Christmas this past year. The French class connected with an all-male orphanage in Haiti through the Claire Mount Foundation and exchanged handwritten cards in French for the Christmas holiday. And together with BDJ, we provided tennis shoes and ponchos to the young men in Haiti to instill the value of giving back. The Links also mentor young adult women through another program called GEMS II, which stands for Girls Empowerment Mission Squared, during their college and postgraduate years, helping them develop financial literacy, parenting skills, healthy relationships, and career goals. In 2013, the Baltimore Maryland Chapter of the Links Incorporated GRAS, which stands for Graduation, Retention, and Support Program. GRAS assists juniors and seniors attending Morgan State University and Coppin State University by providing them with funding to cover fees and other academic costs needed to keep them enrolled and progressing towards graduation. Since its inception, we have contributed over $30,000 to Morgan and Coppin State Universities. This is in addition to our other scholarship programs. The great thing about GRAS is that check donations can be made directly out to Coppin and Morgan and are 100% tax deductible. Our annual fundraiser is the Empowered Women's Leadership Luncheon, and it's a key component in our strategy to empower, inform, and activate women in our community as well as raise funds for our local programs and scholarships. The luncheon began in 2009 with inaugural speaker, the Honorable Maxine Waters. This year, we hosted a panel moderated by our former mayor and our Links sister Stephanie Rawlings Blake as we considered, where do we go from here as a nation, as African-American women? With the luncheon, we seek to expose our guests to a cross-section of voices and perspectives. We want to thank Mayor Pugh for a generous donation of the city's Skybox as one of our silent auction items. The Baltimore Links are making a difference, and we desire to continue to have a powerful and positive impact on the city of Baltimore in the future. Thank you.
Madam President, thank you for all that the Maryland Chapter of the Links do. We know of your great work and want you to know that we appreciate it. Thank you. It is the Council of Customs Generalize the invocation, ask for motion to generalize the prayer. Motion by Councilman Burnett, second by Councilman Dorsey. All those in favor of generalizing the invocation, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion is adopted. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of Proceedings from the May 8th, City Council meetings on the council members' desks.
Yeah, motion approved the journal. Motion by Councilman Henry, second by Council Vice President, I mean Councilman Ryssinger. All those in favor of adopting the journal, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carried, the journal is adopted. A bill signed by the mayor can be found on page two of the agenda. Executive nomination withdrawn.
EA 17-0016, Dr. Danielle Carter Kushner, Member Civilian Review Board, First District. EA 17-0021, Danielle Williamson, Member Civilian Review Board, 11th District.
Executive nominations.
EA 17-0023, Keegan K. Taylor, Member Youth Commission, First District. District 1.
This has been assigned to Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 17-0024, Makaya Jeffers, Member Youth Commission, District 2.
This has been assigned to Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 17-0025, Theodore Levante Clark, Member Youth Commission, District 3.
This has been assigned to Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 17-0026, Shandra D. Davis, Member Youth Commission, District 4.
This has been assigned to Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 17-0027, Alexander Friedman, Member Youth Commission, District 5.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 17-0028, Atticus Cameron, Member Youth Commission, District 6.
This has been assigned to Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 17-0029, Miles McIntyre, Member Youth Commission, District 7.
This has been assigned to Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 17-0030, Eva Wise, Member Youth Commission, District 8.
This has been assigned to Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 17-0031, Darryl Hebron, Member Youth Commission, District 9.
This has been assigned to Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 17-0032, Arius Prince, Member Youth Commission, District 10.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 17-0033, Alexandra M. Owen, Member Youth Commission, District 11.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 17-0034, Mercedes Thompson, Member Youth Commission, District 12.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 17-0035, Darius Farrar, Member Youth Commission, District 13.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 17-0036, Destiny K. Davis, Member Youth Commission, District 14.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 17-0037, Andre Moreno, Member Youth Commission, At Large.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 17-0038, Isaac Wilson, Member Youth Commission, At Large.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 17-0039, Claudia Henry, Member Youth Commission, At Large.
This has been assigned to Executive Appointments Committee. Bills will be introduced.
City Council Bill 17-0072, zoning condition use conversion of one dwelling into two dwelling units in the R.A. zoning district 2229 Calo Avenue. For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of one dwelling into two dwelling units in the R.A. zoning district on the property known is 2229 Calo Avenue is outlined in red in the company plat. Sponsored, Pinkett.
This has been assigned to a Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0073, Federal Hill Local Historic District, for the purpose of designating the area located within certain boundaries as the Federal Hill Local Historic District and providing for special effective date. Sponsored, Costello.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0074, zoning condition use parking, open off-street area, 3023 Virginia Avenue. For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the establishment, maintenance, and operation of a parking For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the establishment, maintenance, and operation of a parking, open off-street area on the property known as 3023 Virginia Avenue is outlined in red in the company plat. Sponsored, Middleton.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee. We have no resolution to be introduced. You can find the Consent Count in Section 8 at the back of the agenda. There are motions to approve the Consent Count. Motion by Councilman Scott, second by Council Costello. All those in favor of approving the Consent Count, say aye. All those in favor of approving the Consent Count, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries. This count is approved. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to request floor privileges.
Second by Councilwoman Schleifer. All those in favor of extending floor privileges to the guest of Councilwoman Middleton, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. Then her guests may take the floor.
And that's the Brigants Brigade Foundation. If you all want to come on up in this area, please. And as they're coming up, I just have a few words to say about the foundation. You want to come around? Thank you. All right. Thank you so much for coming. The Brigants Brigade Foundation has been working tirelessly for the last nine years to equip, encourage, and empower. This seems to be the day to empower. We just had the Links that are empowering. People in our community living with ALS. While the foundation contributes to research, their focus is helping people who are battling this terrible disease right now. The co-founders, O.J. and Sandra Brigants, along with their small but mighty team, cares for these individuals and families by providing access to much-needed equipment, support services, and resource guidance. O.J. Brigants, a former NFL player, and I think it was the Ravens, and his wife Sandra first encountered ALS in 2007. And that's around the time when I first met this couple through Eddie Dopkins, which was a advocate for many foundations. O.J. was diagnosed in 2007 and given an outlook of two to five years. And he has succeeded that. Once the Brigantses experienced this disease firsthand and saw how much emotional, physical, and financial support was needed to simply live each day, they knew they wanted to help others in their situation. From parents who are now able to communicate and travel with their children to individuals who can now actually leave their homes because of a ramp to caregivers who can take an hour to go to their own doctor's appointments, the Brigants Brigade Foundation's work truly makes meaningful and positive impact in the lives of those they serve. And I just wanted to just give them a For nine years, they have been working with this foundation, and they have a special 5K run that they do, which they just had not too long ago. And this couple truly loves Baltimore. And, you know, it was time that we celebrate all the things that they have been doing to help others with this disease. And so let's give a round of applause first to this foundation. And we have a wonderful resolution here that reads, "The City Council of Baltimore Resolution, be hereby known to all that the City Council of Baltimore offers its sincerest congratulations to the Brigants Brigade Foundation in recognition of your dedication to equip, encourage, and empower people living with ALS. The entire membership extends best wishes on this memorable occasion and directs this resolution be presented on this 15th day of May 2017, signed by the Presidents Bernard Jack Young and all members." So thank you so much for taking the time to come here, and we wish you much continued success in finding help with this disease. And thank you, both of you, for being the champion around this cause.
Thank you.
Hey Sharon, I'll ask all council members to come around so we can take a picture.
Yes, please do. Then next year, maybe we can get a council team to do this little 5K with I know we do have a runner on the council
As long as we have people that's going to finish the race.
Councilman Bullock from the 9th District.
We did a race before, and I'm still waiting on my relay.
Good evening, Council President Young, Council Vice President Middleton, distinguished members of the City Council, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you so much for inviting us to be with you all today. We appreciate your recognition of the Brigants Brigade Foundation's efforts to equip, encourage, and empower those living with ALS. Seeing how many ALS are aware this month, we are excited to be recognized for the important work we do on behalf of the courageous families battling this horrible disease. For myself, my wife, Chad De, our staff and board of directors, thank you for this opportunity in honor. We really appreciate it. Have a great rest of the evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wow. We will now move to bills on the second reader. Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 17-0002, Sarah Heaton, Member Community Relations Commission, 7th District.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee held a hearing on Wednesday, May the 10th.
You're going to move it?
Move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Pinkett. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. This motion is, this nominee is confirmed.
EA 17-0003, Carsonah W. Whitehead, Member Community Relations Commission, 3rd District.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Dorsey. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 17-0004, Dr. Sheridan Todd Yerney, Member Community Relations Commission.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Ryssinger. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion, this nomination is confirmed.
EA 17-0005, Stephanie M. Smith, Member Community Relations Commission, 2nd District.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. This nominee is confirmed.
EA 17-0006, Stephen M. Brockman, Member Community Relations Commission, 11th District.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. This nominee is confirmed.
EA 17-0007, Adodia Kiway, Member Community Relations Commission, 2nd District.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Nomination is confirmed.
EA 17-0008, Saida A. Hampton L., Member Community Relations Commission, 4th District.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. This motion carries, and this nomination is confirmed.
EA 17-0009, Dr. Philip H. Farfel, Member Community Relations Commission, 8th District.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Burnett. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 17-0010, Carrie L. Evans, Member Community Relations Commission, 8th District.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Burnett. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 17-0011, John Barber, Member Wage Commission.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 17-0013, Mark J. McLaurin, Member Wage Commission, 11th District.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 17-0014, Ally Amerson, Member Wage Commission, 11th District.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 17-0015, Cheryl Wood, Member Wage Commission, 11th District.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 17-0017, Blair Thompson, Member Civilian Review Board, 1st District.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Cohen. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Please note that Councilman Scott is a nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 17-0018, Frederick Jackson, Member Civilian Review Board, 7th District.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Pinkett. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 17-0019, Dr. Melvin Currie, Member Civilian Review Board, 8th District.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Burnett. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. This nominee is confirmed.
EA 17-0020, Dr. Bridal Pearson, Member Civilian Review Board, 14th District.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Bullock. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed.
EA 17-0022, Leslie Parker Blythe, or Leslie Parker Blyther, Member Civilian Review Board, 7th District.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
I move the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Pinkett. All those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. This nomination is confirmed. Housing and Urban Affairs Committee. Oh, Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move short titles for the remainder of the meeting.
Second by Councilwoman Snead. All those in favor of short titles for the remainder of this hearing, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries. Short titles for the remainder of this meeting.
City Council Bill 17-0035, City Streets Closing, West Trenton Street.
Chair recognizes Councilman Bullock.
Yes, good evening. Thank you, Council President. So the committee heard this bill, 17-0035, on May 11th. It closes a small parcel near Maryland Institute to aid the development of MICA. There are no amendments, and I move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of approving this bill is amended, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0045, City Streets Naming an unnamed 15-foot lane located in the vicinity of William Street and Beachwood Avenue, Unity Lane.
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Mr. President, we held a hearing on this bill. I move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Burnett. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion to approve this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill 17-0046, City Property renaming Harlem Dennison Park to be the William Donald Schaefer Park.
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. We held a hearing on this bill. I move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Burnett. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion to approve this bill moves to third reader. I want to go back to 170035. I said the bill was amended. There were no amendments to this bill, so can you redo that? Councilman Bullock.
Yes, I'd like to move it favorably without any amendments.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0024, Sale of Property, 301 through 311 North Warwick Avenue.
Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the councilperson of the 9th District, I move to send this bill back to committee.
Second by Councilman Pinkett. All those in, no, second by Councilman Bullock. All those in favor of sending this bill back to committee, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion to approve this bill is now back in the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0030, Tax Credit, Citywide High Performance Market Rate Rental Housing Extension of Eligibility.
Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you. This is a citywide bill. The sponsor is the council president. This tax credit would be extended until June 30th, 2024. The application deadline would be extended to December 31st, 2022, and I move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Pinkett. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Please note that Bill, Councilman Henry abstained. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill 17-0036, Sale of Property, Former Bid of West Trenton Street.
Chair recognizes Vice President Middleton.
The sponsor of this bill was the president at the request of the Department of Housing and Community Development. It was heard on April 27th. It's in the 12th District. The Maryland Institute College of Art is interested in acquiring the property for future expansion of its campus and move the bill with a favorable report.
This is not in the 12th, is it? Is it in the 12th? Okay. Second by Councilman Stokes. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion to approve this bill moves to third reader.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead. Third reader for final passage.
City Council Bill 17-0016, Zoning Condition Use Conversion of One Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Unit to One Dwelling Unit and One Efficiency Dwelling Unit in the R.A. zoning district 2823 Huntington Avenue. President Young, Cohen Scott, Dorsey Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Ryssinger, Costello Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 17-0023, Sale of Property, MAP 70, Grid 14, Parcel 988 in Baltimore County. President Young, Cohen Scott, Dorsey Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Ryssinger, Costello Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 17-0041, Downtown Management District and Downtown Management Authority. President Young, Cohen Scott, Dorsey Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, President Young, Cohen Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett Bullock, Riceinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero five six, Electronic Control Devices Authorizing Possession In Most Circumstances. President Young, Scott, Dorsey, Henry. Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett Bullock, Riceinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
Please note that our Councilman Scott is a no vote. This bill is approved.
City Council Bill seventeen dash zero zero five nine, Sale of Property Block 3434, Lots 2 and 1. President Young, Scott, Henry. President Young, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett Bullock, Riceinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved. Committee announcement. Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Executive Appointments will have a hearing on Wednesday, May the 17th, at 11:00 for the Community Relations Commission and Wage Commission. Uh, the executive appointments have another hearing on Wednesday, May the 24th for our youth commission, and that will be televised at 5:00 PM. Thank you.
Okay. Chair recognizes Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Council President. So on Thursday, uh, May 25th, uh, the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee will be meeting here in council chambers. We'll be hearing three bills. The first one will be seventeen dash zero zero five four, Franchise Brideway Over Center Street. That will be at 2:00 PM. We'll also be hearing, uh, Bill seventeen dash zero zero five five, and that is the franchise parking lot with the chain link fence and a portion of the north side of the bed of Bath Street between Calva Street and Guilford Avenue. That will be at 2:05 PM. And we'll be hearing seventeen dash zero zero four zero, City Streets Closing Beds 2, 10-foot alleys bounded by West 27th Street, Fox Street, West 28th Street, and Remington Avenue, and that will be at 2:10 PM.
Thank you. Uh, Chair recognizes, um, you have committee announcements. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh-
Green papers in front of you.
On our colleagues' desks are revised budget schedule. Nothing has changed in the timing, just agencies that were moved around. Um, please note that during the budget hearings this year, we will not be taking testimony. The only time we will be taking testimony is on Wednesday, May the 17th, at 5:00 PM at City Council Taxpayers Night In Chambers. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Council Vice, uh, Councilman Ed Ross Singer. I'm gonna get it right, Sharon.
Mr. President, um, I move to suspension of rules ten dash two.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of suspended rules, announce a hearing. Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The motion carries. Um, Chair recognizes Councilman Ross Singer.
Um, Mr. President, members of the council, the Land Use and Transportation Committee will hold a hearing on Bill seventeen dash zero zero six zero on Wednesday, June the 7th, at 1:00 PM in the council chambers. This is a rezoning, 127, 129, 133, and 135, West West Street and 1220 Race Street. Uh, also ask for suspension of rules ten dash two on the next bill.
Second by Councilwoman Sneed. All those in favor of suspended rules, announce a hearing. Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The motion carries. Chair recognizes Councilman Ross Singer.
The committee will hold a hearing on Bill seventeen dash zero zero six one on Wednesday, June the 7th, at 1:15 PM in the council chambers. This is zoning, conditional use parking, open off-street area located at 4603 Pall Mall Road. Uh, Mr. President, I ask for suspension of rules ten dash two and ten dash three.
Second by, um, Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of suspended rules, announce a hearing. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. The motion carries. Chair recognizes Councilman Ross Singer.
Uh, the committee will hold a hearing on Bill seventeen dash zero zero seven zero on Wednesday, June the 7th, at 1:30 PM in the council chambers. This is a zoning for conditional use parking, open off-street area located 1120, 1122, 1124, and 1126 Clarkson, Clarkson Street, and 1112, 1114, 1116, and 1118 selling the place. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Committee announcements. Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, the Public Safety Committee will hold a legislative oversight this Friday, May 19th, at 1:30. Uh, legislative oversight Baltimore Safe Streets Program. Requesting the Health Department to appear before the Public Safety Committee in order to provide an update of the current and future operations of the Safe Streets Program, especially in light of the recent funding issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Chair recognizes Councilman, um, Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, on June 7th, the Education Youth Committee will hold a hearing in support of our community schools. Community Schools is a nationally recognized model, and here in Baltimore, in my first district, we have Wolf Street Academy, which went from being one of the worst schools in the state of Maryland to one of the best in the city of Baltimore. It is a fantastic program, and we want to show our support for community and after-school programming. Council chambers.
Chair, um, committee announcements. Regular announcement. I want to wish, um, Jasmine Collins a happy birthday. Where you are, Jas? She made me do this. Let's give her a hand. Okay, regular announcements. Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Uh, in an effort to continue to expand awareness and invite people in to participate in the cultural and artistic affairs in the city, uh, I want to bring up a play. Uh, Baltimore Annex Theater is closing their 2016-17 season this thir- beginning this Thursday, May, June, uh, May 18th through June 4th, with The King of Howard Street, an original play about the lives, dreams, and depravations of the formerly homeless writer, housing rights advocate Anthony Williams. If back in March you attended the Labor Committee hearing on the $15-hour wage, or if you were at the 2020 rally over the weekend, you heard Mr. Williams' impassioned testimony, and no doubt if you have ever attended anything here related to housing or homelessness, you have met or heard or seen him. Uh, The King of Howard Street is adapted from his journals uh, by Annex Theater Company Member Rem Pepitone, and being directed by the Baltimore School for the Arts New Theater Department Director, Re- uh, Roz Cawthon. And it will be the first theater production in the new artist-owned and operated multi-use community hub, Le Mondo, which consists of three buildings being brought back to life after decades of vacancy and made possible through sale by the city and the BDC, and through grassroots fundraising, significant grants from the state of Maryland and local foundations. And, uh, these performances, again, are from May 18th through June 4th, 8:00 PM Thursday through Saturday at Le Mondo, 404 North Howard Street. Tickets are $15 for general admission, $7 for students and EBT cardholders, and additional discounts are available, and you can learn more at baltimoreannxtheater.org.
Chair recognizes Councilman Scott. Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, members of the council, I rise to ask that Councilwoman Middleton, uh, honor a moment of silence for the 127 homicide victims that we lost in the city of Baltimore as we started this meeting, and just to remind everyone in the city of Baltimore that no one should be comfortable with the amount of people that are dying on the streets, and that no one should be comfortable in sitting normal in their normal lives if the violence continues in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sneed.
I just want to remind people that we do have, the Labor Committee has a hearing on Thursday in reference to displaced workers at 5:00.
Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
Mr. President, uh, we just wanted to extend the invitation. Uh, my colleague should have got an email today. Um, I'm the board of directors of the Edmonton Village Farmers Market. As a lot of folks know, I'm really into healthy food access and community development. And on June 3rd, I'd like to extend the invitation to all of you for our third season. Uh, we are located at the West Side Skills Center Parking Lot, 4501 Edmonton Avenue. It's a great opportunity to get some fresh fruits and vegetables. We also have a local band come into play, uh, and it's a very excellent community development project. Several of our vendors live in the neighborhood, live in the city, and it's, it's important to support local business. So I just wanted to extend the invitation to all of you to come out. Edmonton Village Farmers Market, June 3rd. I'll see you there. 9:00 AM, thank you. Uh, 9:00 AM, uh, but you can come anytime between 9:00 and 1:00. I don't expect everybody to get up that early on a Saturday. I'll be there at 7:00 setting up. So if you want to come and hang out with me, you're welcome to. Uh, but yeah, thank, thanks, uh, for all, and I look forward to seeing you there. Thank you.
You bringing any of those good donuts?
The donut? I will. For you. I got it.
I know you say healthy, but you know, they were, they were kind of good. Any, anyone else for announcements? Uh, Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
I'd like to invite everyone to, on May 27th at 1:00 PM, starts the game to the First Park Heights Black Sox Baseball League on that wonderful new, uh, uh, field at C.C. Jackson, the Cal Ripken, uh, multimillion-dollar baseball field. Uh, Park Heights finally has a baseball league. Um, it was an effort pushed by Neighborhood United, and every single, uh, youth that wanted to be a part of that league, they, it was, everything is free. The, from the uniforms to the equipment, uh, and they have a whole league now to, to compete. And they're gonna have a parade on the 27th. I think that's around 10:30, but the actual game starts at 1:00, and I think Council President's part of that, uh, will do one of the, for, throw one of the first ball-
On a strike across home plate, tell me.
Also, our ma- our mayor is invited, and of course, uh, the councilperson of the sixth district. So, uh, everyone is invited, and I will send you, uh, information on that as well.
Thank you. Um, Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton. But I want to say this to all council members. You can stand. Um, most of you know that I'm going to Las Vegas to the Shopping Center Convention. If there's anything that's in your district, and I know BDC will be there, that you want me to focus on, um, please let Michael from our office know so that we can, um, advocate for those things. Uh, we're going there for trying to get some food markets in these deserts and any other kind of development that we can bring to Baltimore, but I need to know what your priorities are. Um, we leave Saturday, so please get it to us ASAP. Thank you.
And may we have a moment of silence for the families of the 127 victims in Baltimore City.
Thank you. There being no further business, this concludes the 11th meeting of the 72nd term of the Baltimore City Council. Good night.